All right, today is Thursday, September 12th. It is 6:29 PM. And it looks like we have Commissioner Halliburton on Zoom and Commissioners. Gendron?
Van Gendron.
Van Gendron, Commissioner Backen and myself. So let's call the meeting to order. You guys want to pledge allegiance for a work session? Do you want to skip that? It's a work session. Yeah.
I didn't know what the protocol for it.
Let's get it.
It's okay.
The approval of the agenda is the next matter. Does anybody have any suggested changes to the agenda? Can you hear us okay? Commissioner Halliburton, should I put my recording thing on?
I can hear okay. And as long as I'm here, I'd also like to say I'm, I'm going to turn my camera off and I'm taking care of somebody who's a chair bound right now. My wife just had a knee replacement. And so I might have to leave for a few minutes at a time, but I'll participate as much as I can.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Um, do we, do we have minutes from the last meeting?
I didn't put it in here because it was a work session. Yeah.
Is, I think we're supposed to have minutes for all our official duties typically. But I think that's your area of expertise, but this may be look into that.
Okay, I'll look into it. It's just, I don't know if it's the same as council. Council wants a work session.
Oh, is that true?
Minutes too. It's an end discussion.
And it's not, you're not talking about an executive session, right?
No, it's just, um, so work sessions, you don't vote on anything exactly. And so if we vote, then it's a special session.
Okay.
Yeah. All righty, so it sounds like we're all in approval of the agenda. So let's, uh, we don't have any interested citizens. I don't, there's nobody in the audience, nobody online, right? Okay, thank you. Yeah. Uh, then let's move right along to section B here, our work session, planning commissioner review of various amendments, primarily to comply with HB 3395 and SB 1537. Mr. Fisher, do you want to give us your staff report?
Certainly. So this has been sort of on the back burner for a few months. In the 2023 legislative session, um, the legislature passed 3395, which had some requirements for local land use rules to be changed to comply with state law. Those are described in the, in the background on page, on page one. And then in the 2024 session, they did, they passed Senate 1537, which had some more changes. So usually when the legislature does something like that, there's some money attached to it. And we took advantage of that on behalf of Dayton to get a grant to do these updates to comply with the rules. So that's the intent of what is in front of you this evening. The main items contained in House Bill 3395 are some middle housing requirements. In case anybody needs a refresher on what middle housing is, the housing types that are in between, uh, single family and, uh, multifamily. So duplexes, triplexes, quads, attached single family, and now also a relatively new housing type called single room occupancy, which are more of a dormitory style, uh, housing unit where you have multiple units that share kitchen and bathroom. And usually they have some sort of common area. And in larger cities, um, uh, the rules say in cities over 25,000 people that all those middle housing types need to be reviewed under the same procedures and same standards, nothing more restrictive than that's allowed for uh, single family homes on lots that are designed and planned for, uh, single family use. The change in 3395 was they, they dropped the threshold for duplexes and single room occupancies down to apply to populations with, uh, over 2,500 people. So Dayton falls into that. So, um, the change, the main changes are that we're now required to permit duplexes on any lot that's zoning and planning for single family according to the same procedures, according to the same rules. According to the same standards, we're not allowed to apply any rules that are more stringent for for permitting duplexes than what is required for single family. And for single resident, uh, single room occupancies up to, um, up to six minutes. For a single family lot. And then where multifamily is allowed, they're required to be permitted up to the same density that's allowed for in the multifamily. So that's what we have here. 1537 was, um, there was a package of, um, mandatory adjustments. So adjustments generally to objective standards, mostly up to 10% that if a proposal meets certain qualifications to qualify for that adjustment, they're required to be. And some tweaks to procedural requirements. So now cities are not allowed to essentially require a hearing for most, a public hearing for most, um, housing applications. So they have to follow the rules that are in, uh, the revised statutes for limited land use decisions. And those provide for a public comment period, for a public notice, public comment, public consent, like written comments. The cities, cities are no longer allowed to hold a public hearing on the initial decision unless it's. So that applies to, that applies to, it's always, typically it's, it's applied to property line adjustments, partitions. In larger cities, uh, they improve subdivisions under limited land use procedure. And site design review for multifamily projects. So those all have to follow the original procedure now. So the difference, the impact for Dayton is that, uh, we have, and most small cities that are in the cog jurisdictions require a public hearings for subdivisions, uh, for site design review for multifamily projects. And in some, in a lot of cases, even partitions. That's no longer allowed except for 1537. So those are the, so those are the changes that are, that's a broad overview of the changes that are included in these amendments. Any questions on that? No?
Okay. Want to make sure that I understand. A lot allows development of five or more units. The single room occupancy development must be approved up to the number of units allowed by the underlying density standard. So for multi, where, where multifamily is allowed. So as in like, if the, if the area is selling for, say, an apartment building, that's a people must, must put up a single room occupancy building there. They're, they're, they're allowed to do that to the, to the, to the density standards for that lot. Is that what that means?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So the, and so that's, we're doing very similarly to multifamily. But just the difference is that they're not going to have, the individual units are not going to have their own bathroom, their own kitchen. Share. In the, that's, that's the distinction. The more significant changes or the more significant policy change is the requirements for single family lots for the requirement, uh, single room occupancies with up to six minutes. And approve those under the same standard. And with all those, I think the underlying assumption stated this way, but it's always a thought about it, is for instance, if you're talking about the impact, traffic, utilities, those sorts of things, comparing duplex to a single family home. Apparently, single family at home, that's four bedrooms and two baths, and compare that to a duplex with two units that are two bedrooms, one bath each, you're talking about a similar load demand for infrastructure, for water, sewer, and similar traffic generation to a larger single family. So I think that's sort of the underlying assumption. Underlying assumption. And just, and it's just to to, um, remove the barriers to allow, to allow easier permitting of all kinds of housing products that lost between single family and multifamily. Middle housing or before it became policy was called the single. So that's what we're dealing with. So no questions on the questions on the policy or what we're trying to comply with?
What would normally be included in a site design review?
So site design review is for generally for any commercial project or industrial project or a, or multifamily project.
Okay. Like a single building, multifamily? I guess I'm.
Single building, multi, multi building, doesn't matter.
And it's, it does that cover the, where you were just going over kind of the traffic and utilities and all of those sorts of things? Or is this just, is this purely, do we like the way it looks?
It's all those things.
All of those.
Yeah, it's, it's how you, it's how you connect the infrastructure, uh, making sure you have a sufficient capacity to certainly use, um, traffic, uh, traffic impacts, uh, street furniture improvements are usually included, parking requirements, traffic circulation, um, fire access. There's, and there's the aesthetic component too, there's the, there's the design of the building.
And that's being lifted for just middle housing? Is that what I'm understanding? That it does not have to go through that?
Correct.
Or else I guess start state laws.
Correct. So, so site design review is typically not required for single family residential.
Right, okay. Okay. All right.
Yeah, so it's to put all those housing types in that same process as a single one, which is essentially when you have a lot that's created, divided, created, there's something to do with partition. Then it's, it'll just be building permit.
Right.
After that.
Okay.
And which isn't a, which isn't a land use decision.
Right.
There's a planning check.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, if it's, if it's okay, we can just walk through the, uh, the changes in a good way. It makes sense. So Exhibit A begins on page three of your packet. There's some changes, oh, I guess I should say also that, you know, like the other, like the other updates we've done. We try and capture other things that need to be done too, um, when we have the opportunity to put into this process. So there's, there's, there's other things in here that are not directly related to those bills, but we tried to capture and clean up because a lot of these haven't been given much attention and put some time. So in Exhibit A, there's a few additional definitions. I've, um, applicants on density have found our density standards confusing. Specifically, um, they don't know if we're expected to calculate density using gross area of a lot, of a lot or net area after, um, dedications typically. So usually in subdivision, there's some right of way dedication, there's some park dedication. There may be, um, constrained areas that need to be set aside and tracts. And this adopts a density standards that relies on, uh, net acreage for computing density. And that's the more common way to do it now. And this is language that I pulled from City of Salons code. The other change here is, uh, it does mention, uh, lots as a unit for computing density. The middle housing standards have have changed the way we look at density for compliance with subdivision proposals because you can now are permitted to fit a lot more units on a single lot. For single family. So that complicates the density, um, density computations. So the intention, um, the way it's intended to work or proposed to work or designed to work in these amendments is that the, generally the minimum lot standards are going to be the major factor in determining density for single family subdivisions and land divisions. Um, and then units will be the variable for computing density, uh, when we're looking at actual development proposals through site review, through site design review that are, that are applied to individual lots that have been created. So for instance, if, um, there's a density standard of, uh, minimum four units per acre, maximum eight units per acre for subdivision, that would be, that would be computed using lots. And then if there are individual sites, uh, where a multifamily project or a, a large single room occupancy project was, was proposed, it would be the units per acre for that site that would determine whether or not fits within the density parameters. So that's what we're going for with that change, and hopefully that'll be easier for, um, applicants to follow. There's the middle housing definition that's there to, to, um, speak to those categories of, of, of housing that we're talking about with the, with the legislative amendments. There's the definition of single room occupancy there. And those are taken right from, right from the bill, right from the ORS language. Then there's the amendments to the residential zones. Um, beginning on page four are the changes to the R1 zone. The major changes, the significant changes there are, um, duplexes are permitted use and they're subject to the same lot size requirement as a single family. And the single room occupancies are identified in there as a primitive use. The other change was I struck the section for special permitted uses and instead just, just made them permitted uses with, and preserve the same references to the, uh, individual development standards for those use categories. Just to it's just to clean up, to clean up the language so you don't have as many sections and don't confuse the fact that those are permitted uses. In the conditional use category, um, there's just a added language in there regarding manufactured homes. So we have a, and this was a code update that was a few years ago to deal with manufactured homes. There's a specific allowance, uh, to allow although typically manufactured homes also have to follow the same, the same procedures and, and permits as stick built homes. But there is, there is an allowance for manufactured homes that are placed next to historic properties. So that's just to make sure that that's clear in conditional uses in the R1. The dimensional standards, there was a higher, there's a larger minimum lot size for duplexes than what, than was for single family. So that makes, um, that makes duplexes subject to the same minimum lot size requirement. Page six is setback requirements. Um, I am suggesting that we just have one rear setback requirement of 15 feet for residential uses in the R1. Instead of the, instead of the current standard that's 15 feet for one story and 12 feet for two story. That's a new policy change. 15 feet is very common. Rear guard setback, 12 feet is on the larger side, even for two story homes. And it was just meant to simplify the code. Is that acceptable? In the development standards, we have lots, a lot coverage requirement. And the language in the code now was confusing to a lot of people. Especially in that table that has rows for maximum building coverage for the primary building, then maximum, maximum parking area. That add up to 65%. And then a seemingly confusing standard for combined maximum lot and parking area coverage of 60%. So I struck that table and replaced it with a straight away 65% lot coverage requirement to eliminate that confusion. The rest is just, is just, um, what's that? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Rob.
Hi, actually you saw it in time. It was on these development standards. I had a comment on, uh, on page seven, section F. We have that shiny new definition of, uh, gross density and net density, but here it doesn't say which one.
Uh, it's.
Density.
It's not, it's not for, it's net acreage.
I think.
So, so the, 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 the definition of density and the density calculations from the definition apply to this standard.
Okay. All right. I just thought maybe you should say the net, just say for units or the minimum net density of four units per acre. But as long as it applies, I, I didn't read it that way, but I wasn't trying to read it that way either. So, okay.
You definitely do that. I mean, I'm a, I'm a big advocate for repeating things in the code to make sure that.
Yeah, redundancy can be a good thing.
Using it, see it many times.
Thank you.
Um, the big addition there is that it, um, applied for subdivision, it applies to lots and not units. So subdivisions typically don't include actual development on the individual lots. And subdivision now can be approved with, um, units of, of multiple units on single lots. So it makes, it makes it very hard to predict what, uh, density could be permitted on those lots when they are created. Uh, so this establishes that when we're, when we're looking for density compliance for subdivisions, we're talking about lots. And then, um, and then most of the rest of it is just, is just cleaning up, cleaning up the code. We have this requirement for redevelopment plans, and that's just to make sure that, um, we can meet minimum density requirements and that we're not permitting, um, land to be divided or developed that, um, that doesn't, that prohibits or prevents, makes more difficult land to be developed to the minimum densities that are allowed in the old. So we don't, for instance, want a large home or a large amount of impervious surface to be developed on a, on a one acre lot that prohibits that lot from being divided in the future, um, at the minimum density standard. So you want it available so we can move our housing targets.
Before you move on?
Yeah.
Excuse me, you, after you explained the density, I have another question. Um, I, I understood the difference between lots and units, but now this, this section F uses both. It says the lots shall be at a minimum density of four units per acre. I'm not sure I understand what that means. If, does it mean that if, if they're duplexes, that they only have a minimum density of two lots per acre?
So the unit in that, in, in the unit in this standard right now, and I understand the confusion, we can, we can, we can clean that up if you like. But here, unit means lot for computing the density.
So should it be four lots per acre?
We can, we can do that, yeah.
I mean, uh, it, it's not me that needs to understand it. It's an applicant.
Right, I understand. But if you're, if you're if you're bringing it up now, then that's a.
Yeah. So, so even if it is duplex or some other sort of middle housing that's proposed for the lots, it's still a minimum density of four lots per acre.
So this, this applies to subdivisions.
Right.
This, this density standard will apply for an applicant that comes in with a subdivision application. So and for subdivisions, we're just creating lots.
That's true. That's true. You might not know what the building is, would you?
Right. So and once those, and once those lots are created, they can, they will be able to develop that lot with a single family home, with a duplex, or with a single room occupancy.
I got you. Thank you. Yep, I get it now.
And the unit, uh, dwelling unit density will primarily apply to multifamily lots. So larger developments if we, if we end up. So that's where the, the dwelling unit density will apply. But that standard only implies the subdivisions only for the creation of lots. So on page eight of the updates to the R2 zone, which are a little bit more involved. The R2 actually already permits, uh, most of these types. It's just, it's just, uh, it's worded in a confusing way. We talk about, you know, for instance, the existing code speaks to a combination of permitted, attached, or detached dwellings on a lot. And I think in the past, that is, that is interpreted as to capture multifamily, but we don't use until now, we have used multifamily in the code. So that's, that standard is adjusted to specifically include multifamily homes. Uh, single family attach and detach are still there. Buildings with two or more dwelling units, uh, that's been replaced with, um, middle housing types. And that middle housing type definition would apply to that standard to capture all those types. Just like in the R1, I've moved all the special permitted uses just to permitted uses. Just like in the R1, I've moved all the special permitted uses just to permitted uses. Conditional uses, there's no change. The dimensional standards, there are the. Middle housing types in the dimensions, in the dimension standards, the main distinction there is the distinction between. The lot size requirements for. The detached, single family and middle housing types and the attached single family. There are minimum. Lot width requirements for attached single family, which we didn't have before. The setback requirements are generally consistent with the R1. So I would have a setback for multifamily. And then the development standards beginning on page. Ten. Going over to page eleven. There's a still con- there's the same conflict, there's, there's the same confusing table for lot coverage. In the R2 as opposed to the R1, so it's dealt with in the same way. It's a slight, slightly higher allowance for lot coverage because it's a. It's a zone that allows for more dense development. Let's see. Density. So I made the dismay, I'm making the suggestion that we. Say that minimum, that manufactured home parks and multifamily development be subject to the same. Density standards. For both of those. So the minimum density of six units per net acre is the same. And I'm just suggesting that the multi, the standard for multifamily, multifamily development go up to. Twelve units per acre, per net acre for the maximum. And that standard applies to both types of development. Just for streamlined, for simplification, neither standard is particularly high. If you look at, if you look at other codes, maximum, maximum density of twelve units per net acre is significantly less. Especially in larger cities. So that tends to be a, tends to be a main concern in small towns is, is. Not the main, that's too much dense development. The amendments to the commercial residential district. Begin on page twelve. Those are more. More clarifying amendments than policy changes. Generally, the middle housing types are already permitted there. They just, you know, you just don't call them middle housing types. You don't use the, the common language now. That's changed. Yeah, that's a, that's, so the, the, the commercial district is, the residential commercial district is still a commercial zone. It's in the commercial comprehensive plan designation. That's a very. Typical. Type of development that you see many. The language that's. The project going up to Stonestreet. Any questions on what I've covered so far? I don't want to speak to it too fast. Take your time with this over the next month. Feel free to shoot off any comments or suggestions.
Excuse me, I. Something did just sink in back on the density in the CR zone. Why, why are we reducing it for multifamily from eight to six?
In the CR?
Yeah, on page eleven, that is the CR, right? Or maybe that's the R2, page eleven.
Page eleven is R2.
Okay, and you, it took a second for it to sink in after you, I didn't notice that when I was reading it before. And what would be the reason that we would decrease the density when we're trying to promote more density?
Which, which line are you talking about?
Well, in F, right now, it's the old three that's struck, says the minimum density is eight units per acre, right? And then you've added multifamily in on two above and the minimum is six units per acre.
Yeah, we're reducing the, we're reducing the minimum density to make it consistent with manufactured home parks.
But why does multifamily need to be consistent with manufactured home parks?
It doesn't. It's just a suggestion to make the same, to, to just create a. A minimum and maximum density standard that can, that can be easily understood by applicants.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to be that way.
Or, or raise them, raise the manufactured home to eight? Cause I mean, six units, six units per acre with single family isn't super dense. In a manufactured home park, it seems like six would be super sparse.
I agree. It's very, it's very.
Okay, well, we can talk about it later, I guess, but I'd advocate for the both of them being eight minimum.
I support, I, I support that. As I said before. Against them, other, other standards and yeah, our, our density standards are very, very low. I can make that change right now and put it in the next draft. We can discuss it more. We can provide more analysis.
I think a visual understanding of what this density might look like. There are a number of mobile home parks in the next larger city. I've seen a number of them, have a sense of how far apart those units are from one another, but what kind of density standards am I looking at when I? When I, when I see those, those things seem awfully close together and I suspect it's a much higher number per acre, but I, but I don't know.
Sorry, I, I, I don't specifically.
Okay, I might have to look that up to get a sense of what this actually looks like. Okay, great. Thank you.
So the minimum, so the minimum is generally there to make sure that we have, that we meet housing need. Providing enough units in the lot under, underutilizing. And maximum is generally, for subdivisions, it's generally dictated by the minimum lot size. It's generally. The maximum on, on individual lots is, is generally to minimize those impacts of the typical association with.
Is, is it even? I'm sorry, is it even common to have a maximum density?
Is it common to have a maximum in towns like Dayton? Yes.
Okay.
It's not a, I mean, it's, it's. You know, it's, it's generally a neighborhood concern. While permitting too much density. But it's a, you know, it's a, it's a policy decision that the commission can. Make a recommendation on for city council to consider.
So what I'm reading, so we're talking about section two. F2 manufactured home parks and multifamily development. Rob, you're suggesting that we make it the minimum density shall be six, change it from six to eight units per net acre?
Yes.
Units means, units in this, in this standard means dwelling. Because both many, both manufactured home parks and multifamily, multifamily development are. Multiple units on a single lot. So it would be calculated taking the acreage of the lot. And multiplying that by the density standards and that will give you a range of units that you're required to place on the lot for. And a, and a maximum. I generally. As a general personal bias, I'm not a fan of maximum density standards. Generally, the other. Site design requirements, generally like open space, parking. Those requirements, height requirements, those will be more. Those will be stronger determining factors of the ultimate density of the development than the actual density.
Well, maybe we should get rid of them.
Visualize this more. Yeah, I think, I think there's other. Factors that come into play there where you can only, there, there's kind of a de facto maximum based on our other requirements. So I don't, I don't mind. Getting rid of the maximum. At least for the next draft. Six seems low. I'm fine with eight. And then if we come back later. Once we've got a visual or.
We will have, so. We have a comp plan update underway. So we're, we're now coming up with. Comp plan housing policy recommendations. That will partially inform the housing capacity analysis, which will take place next year. And those, those efforts will provide more hard numbers on. Specific housing targets. That will. Provide more hard data to drive the density discussion. But I think going from minimum of eight, of six units to eight units. Right now. Is a, it is not a big policy jump at all. And I'm, I'm in favor of, of striking a maximum density in this update if, if it's the will of the commission. Okay, we can revisit that next month. And then, so we were in the CR. And let's see, the dimensional requirements. Lot area standards for in the CR. So I made some suggestions for. Changing those lot area requirements. And those are primarily dictated by the fact that all the lots in that district are. Typically plotted in the original town of Dayton plat. And the, the standard lot size is sixty by one twenty, which is a seventy-two hundred square foot lot size. And it just didn't make sense to me to have, for instance, a minimum lot area standard. For single family of five thousand that essentially was made any of the existing lots there. Undivisible for that purpose. So it made more sense to. Stick with a seven thousand square foot lot size that was, that's closer to the common lot size in the town of Dayton. It could be seventy-two hundred feet, but seven thousand square feet. Me, meets that, means that the common lots meet the standards, the most common lots plotted there meet standards. And there's some work in there for. And. The attached standard of thirty-five hundred square feet makes those lots divisible for, for two single family attached lots. If an applicant wants to do that. And they can divide a lot, one of those lots to thirty-five hundred square feet for a commercial use. That was, that was the thinking there behind the suggestions. Questions on that? Subsection D is just a.
What, what page are you on now?
I am on fifteen, sixteen and seventeen. So that table there for subsection B is just reorganized. The table on seventeen should be. Could be in red. The down is just basically a reformatting. Into a proper table instead of just rows that are chucked into a table, but those are the same standards. Maximum structure height. So for principal, principal structure. I changed it from thirty feet to thirty-five feet just to make, make it consistent with. The typical maximum height that's in all our other residential zones. It didn't make sense to me to have a lower maximum height in the central commercial district than we have in our. Residential zones.
Excuse me? On page seventeen. It's just a detail therein, under A, use restrictions. It still references special permitted uses when I think you struck that section.
I didn't strike that. Got it.
I think just the word special permitted could be, could be deleted there.
Very good. I agree.
Also, where in every zone where you've struck special permitted, which is point zero three of each. The numbers need to shift up one. So like, eliminate the special permitted. Yeah, and it's minor, but there's, but there's a few references within the text and that would need to be updated according to renumbering.
Got it. Got it. Um, and those are the subsequent changes to the CR. Any questions on the CR? Again, feel free to. Send me comments, mark up this document, mark up the PDF. Email it to me at any time. Let's see, page twenty one, manufactured homes on individual lots, this is really just updating. The, these are changes that were, we did a uh. Code update to allow mass timber housing products. Um, in another one of my, in another one of my cities, and these are similar, these are some of the changes that they. Uh, the consultant made, some of the recommendations of consultant made uh to the manufactured home sections. Um, in that town, uh, it's updating the definitions and the standards to be consistent with the language that's currently in ORS. It's removing some of the subjective language that's no longer, that no longer can be applied to manufactured homes. Um, it is aimed at making the manufactured homes subject to all the same. Same standards, nothing more strict than what is uh required for single family. With the exception of that, those permissions that allow for. Um, uh, conditional uses when placing manufactured homes adjacent to historic properties. As was updated, like I said, a few years ago. So that's the, that's the intent of, of those, those changes, for instance. Um, the pitch of the roof can't be regular, regulated, uh, there can't be specific standards that apply for just manufactured homes that don't apply to stick homes. Extra material, uh, one standard that's dropped is manufactured home, she'll have an exterior as residential appearance. That's not clear in objective, so that's going to be applied under the current rules. And then the, uh, page twenty four. Uh, the table that summarizes application types. All those types of applications that are now have to be reviewed under the. The state's limited language procedures are now moved to a type one procedure. So that includes site plan review. Subdivisions. Just like, just like, just like plan of the year and subdivisions for data. Um, then beginning on page twenty five, the individual sections where the type one procedures are described. Subdivisions and site development review to type one procedures. Site plan and subdivisions are removed from the type two actions. Current code requires a type two action for a partition. Including private street, so that's a distinction that's no longer allowed. Under twenty eight for minor variances. So that incorporates, uh, number five there incorporates the language. Just by reference. That's currently made part of um ORS one ninety seven. By House Bill fifteen thirty seven. The. That adjustment, that list of manufacturer, of mandatory adjustments in the ORS is, is fairly. Complex to read. Um, and it is set to sunset in twenty thirty two. Um, so I made the, made the judgment to incorporate it that way. Rather than moving all the language from ORS one ninety seven into our code, since it was just going to sunset anyway. But I, I'm, I'm obviously open to any suggestions on how to handle it differently. Um, and they're mandated, they're mandatory adjustments, so if they qualify. For any of those adjustments. We have to approve it. Uh, but this creates a, an actual, this incorporates it into the minor variance. Application, so this would be the application, the type of application that an applicant would submit if they're seeking. Uh, that, and adjustment under that provided in the ORS.
Excuse me? On, on the minor variances on page twenty eight. Have, have the amendments to ORS one ninety seven A made by section thirty eight of HB fifteen thirty seven, have those been codified into the statute yet?
Into, into ORS?
Right. I'm, I'm just wondering why you're using the bill number instead of the statute number there?
Um. That's the information that I have to go on right now.
Okay, alright, well, if that is right, I suggest you put the year of the House bill in there because they reuse House bill numbers. And to be clear, usually in parenthesis after the HB fifteen thirty seven, there would be the, the year. Whatever year that bill was passed.
Thanks, I appreciate that. If you have any more, Rob, if you have any more detailed thoughts on that, I'm, I'm welcome, all yours.
Well, I could have looked it up, but I didn't.
Site development review procedure beginning on page twenty nine. Adds into um, adds mental housing types into the list of, list of exceptions of types of development that do not require site development review. There's a requirement in the submental requirements, uh, so um. Subsection eight requires a written narrative that um documents how the applicant is meeting all the. Critical criteria that's um. That's been a requirement that's on the uh, application checklist, but it hasn't been written into code and even um. You've just been requesting it as additional material requested by the city planner. Um, that just puts it into the code. Makes that expectation clear. And then on page thirty one, that. Updates the uh, site development or site design review criteria to make it consistent with the um. Uh, the model code for small cities. So the general change there is instead of the more subjective language. Um, it incorporates generally the uh, objective, objective standards that apply in the specific zone or apply to the specific. Development proposal. Page thirty two. Is an amendment to the procedures for type one reviews, so this is to, is to incorporate the notice requirements. That are required for limited man use decisions, so right now our type one procedures. Uh, don't require a public notice of the application to be sent out to neighboring properties. Uh, because they're lower level typically ministerial decisions. But this. Add those notification requirements and so people will have the opportunity to submit the comments. On those application types, subdivisions, mainly subdivisions and site development. Um, that are now required to be reviewed. So that provides an opportunity for written comment and creates a, a right to appeal. That staff decision to plan a commission. When it's appealed to planning commission, there's the opportunity for a public hearing.
So I. Excuse me, I have a question on that is, so are these provisions in state law now?
Yes.
And the, the D one, the divide the fourteen day period for comments prior to the decision that's required?
That's required, yes.
So what's the difference between a type one and a type two review now? Because usually that's the difference is, is that comment period before the decision is made. That's, that's. Go ahead.
Okay, two requires a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, okay.
So when we're sending the notice out on a type two application, it's notice of the hearing.
Okay.
There's instructions on submitting testimony uh to planning commission as part of the hearing.
Gotcha.
So this, this provides an opportunity for written comments without the. And that is, I think, works with the requirements that housing applications review. Only by clear objective standards. I think the rationale for not requiring a hearing is that um. Since we're dealing with for these types of applications, for these types of housing applications. If we're dealing with only clear objective standards and no reformat standards is required. We're just relying on staff to clearly objectively apply those standards to the decision. There's really very limited level discretion that planning commission could apply. Whether it's a decision. Streamline the process and, and. Help ensure that those decisions are made. With the understanding that there is an opportunity for public hearing or appeal and. For more complex applications like. Site designer views and subdivisions. Almost every application involves a request for some sort of discretion, some sort of relief. Uh, from a standard, and if they request that through a major variance, that will bump the whole application up to, to, to procedure. When applications are combined, higher level, the higher order procedure applies. And then the opportunity for public hearing will be provided and. Apply the discretion that's afforded to the planning commission under the, under the positive decision. Hopefully that makes sense. Then in exhibit B, um, the R three. We, we skipped over the R three zone in the, in the. List of amendments to the residential, to the other residential zones. Um, and I produced this table to demonstrate that there is considerable overlap. In the standards, in the, in the current standards that apply in the R two and the R three zones. Um, and there's only one. Essentially one property in the city that's included in the R three district. And that's the, and that's the, uh, the manufactured home park. Uh, I want to say. Country. Country master here, that's the, that's the only one.
Yeah.
That's the only property, so. Um. I thought it'd be worthy, worth considering whether or not we still need the R three zones, since it's so, since there's so much overlap between the R two. And we could simply make um those uses that are um. Essentially merge the two zones. Get rid of the R three, allow everything that's permitted in the R three to be permitted in the R two. And package a. zoning map. To change the country to be fair. From R three to R. Just to streamline the code. There's a move, remove a. A zoning district that's very commonly used. Provides very little different than what's. Like admitted in the R two.
Getting rid of, getting rid of the R three zone would mean that something that says that now is R three, we're single family. Detached homes are not permitted. Detached and detached homes are not permitted, they would be permitted in that, in that area, is that right?
Correct.
Looked like wiped away.
You would be wiping, you would be wiping away.
I mean, I didn't see it.
Again, it doesn't, it doesn't change. So manufactured home parks are already permitted if both. Minimum lot size is the same, the other, the other. The other requirements are the same.
So there's no other vacant one?
Doesn't create.
That's R three right now?
Correct.
Oh, that's, so that's really it?
What I'm, what I'm getting at here is that, uh, if it was permitted, uh, it could be possible that a developer could come along. And basically turn that, 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 that group of ones. Suspecting marginally, at least someone that acquired, acquired apartments, but affordable homes. Uh, simply wipe it off the map and develop it if you're single family and it's attached or detached. Thus eliminating a source of affordable housing. So, so I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about permitting, permitting single family homes to be built on, on that property.
Yes, Commissioner Oliver?
Well, that was the point I was gonna make. And so I agree, and the, the other point I was gonna make is just because there's only one property right now with the R three zone. Uh, there's a lot of land in the unincorporated urban growth boundary. Where, uh, if the city uh decided that it needed some more multifamily. And they wanted to designate the land and ensure that it would become multifamily and not get covered with a subdivision, the R three zone would be the one to put on.
Yeah, that's, that, that point I thought it hurt a bit.
Okay. So there, so there, there's interest in, in. In, in, in. In setting aside areas that are not to be developed with similar.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you for that clear direction.
If we read, um, the bill versus the statute on twenty eight, I think it's supposed to be SB thirteen thirty seven.
Anyway, um. So I attached the, the twenty twenty three um. Legislation and twenty twenty four legislation reports just for your information. So you could understand why we're doing this.
Thank you.
So I will update the, I will go through the R three. So I will update the, I will go through the R three. And make all the similar updates to accommodate the mental housing types in R three. And proceed with the same, the same amendments that were proposed in R one and R two. Are there any other questions or comments on what we?
This will be back in front of us for actual vote next month.
If you wish. I. I think it warrants taking.
Another work session.
Giving me some time to digest. What's here?
Yeah, that's fine.
So I'd encourage the commission to do that before. Doing the scheduling here.
Yes. There's a lot here.
So another work session next. Sure.
Yes.
Anything else for section B? He is other business. Been coming, I think we need to update the planning commission on the website, it still has. Tim on there. We have the point where we can kind of start publicizing to fill that position.
We'll need a, an actual letter of resignation from him. When I last spoke, he seemed to be freed up with time, so he said that he'd come back. So. No, he just, he mentioned it, but he never put it in writing. Which we will need in writing and then for it to be accepted by the commission so that we can. Yeah, start advertising that we can see.
So in other things that I've been working on, Dayton, the, the. Housing policy update to the Complan, that project is moving forward, we'll have the second. Pack meeting and. Community meeting to open house to review the recommendations, both of those will be coming up in October. The update to the transportation system plan is underway and I'm putting together the pack for the. I'm sorry, profit, uh, project advisory committee for that project together. Does anybody have any interest in joining that committee? Transportation is fun stuff.
What is, what is this committee, my mind wandered, I'm sorry.
So we're updating, we're, we're updating the, we're updating the transportation system plan. So that. So that is intended to provide for, like other, like other Complan updates, provide the, make sure you have a. Transportation system in place to accommodate the next one, there's growth. Street standards, street calming, safe routes to school, we'll be reviewing. Alternative street sections for the downtown area to make sure that we have enough, I think, primarily. Make sure we have enough parking to accommodate the new development that we're anticipating downtown. Street standards and a, a street network for the VGB expansion area. So there's, there's a lot that's involved with it, so, and people generally love to. Love to dig into. Traffic problems for various reasons, so it's.
Before or after that, you're a problem.
It's something that a lot of people have opinions about.
Yeah.
So it tends to be a fun.
Does that include any ADA? Conversation, I, I'm, I'm not sure where our psych books and programs and things like that are, but I have a feeling it's a little bit not.
They, they are not, yeah, but my wife, my wife could speak on that at, at length and in detail.
Oh, she'll get an invitation.
I'm sure. Okay, yeah, my, my, my interest, so far as that, I would, I would think it would probably be. Probably be best if we were, were involved on it. This strikes me as, you know. I, I tend to, I tend to think that the people who are, people who are involved with one another outside of, outside of the committee shouldn't be both be on the committee. And then, and for ADA issues, she's definitely would, would, would speak to that a lot better, the reason I was asking, this sounds, this sounds like transportation. Like transportation of people, of parking, street use. My, my area of transportation is a different part of it, that's a business of moving goods from here to there.
Rates?
Yeah. That's, that's my, that's. So.
What's the commitment for the transportation committee?
Um, we'll have, I can't remember the, the minimum number of meetings that we're having, but generally there are one meeting. Every other month. Mainly it's to review the deliverables that are produced by the consultant.
Okay.
So there'll be a series of technical manuals that describe existing conditions, establish goals and objectives. For the city, for the plan for the next twenty years. Put together a. List of projects typically. That implement and execute those goals and objectives.
Okay. And that starts.
Review our current standards. Putting together. Street design or, or street standards that implement certain designs in downtown area will be. Something that. Appeals to the aesthetic aspirations of, of the district and there'll be. Things that'll. Be informed by public input.
Send me an invite. Once the meetings get figured out, I just, before I have to. Mondays and Tuesdays are bad because I know Portland stays, but.
Rob, any interest?
Maybe, not really. I think I'll probably get my fill of it just being on the planning commission. But if, if you really need somebody, I suppose I have time.
Okay. We, we should have at least one planning question on the, on the pack.
I'll probably do.
But that, and that'd be other opportunities to. Just provide. And adoption, of course.
The status of that.
So we just got the fire district and the school district to concur with the plan. And since we do have some public. Projects in, in the plan and so they finally concurred. They're approving the resolutions, the council will approve their resolution as well to concur with the public building plans. And then we'll have an ordinance to approve the plan and adopt it. So that's gonna take a couple of months and then. Permanent will be. Working, we'll get everything assessed. For the tax freeze and then, yeah.
The new development. Is that before that actually gets assessed by the?
Yes, so with approving it before it's finalized. It should be assessed at, at the, before it's completely finished, so then anything. So then, when it gets reassessed, that value that has been added with the redevelopment. Is what's gonna help with the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll. We'll have another work session on this, these updates next month, I think I will go ahead and. Send the, the notice to DLCD of the amendments. To meet the thirty five day notice requiring the scheduling and public hearing. Plan scheduling here. In November. That's okay, it's. Or.
October is ten, yep. Shall we adjourn? Okay, seven fifty. Yeah.